Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, March 3, 2021. Call to order at 6:04 PM. Content in this meeting is being recorded. We are using a product called GoToWebinar. Can listen in via phone, you know, it's an only mode, or you can join via web or mobile device in a participative mode. There is a question box where you can enter questions if you have them. And we'll talk about how that will be incorporated tonight shortly. All questions that are submitted or comments are part of the record. So we'll discussion of how this is going to go first interview is at 6:15 approximately. The discussion we had Monday night, the the plan around public input is going to be that you can enter questions in the question box if you have them. At the end of the board's interview of the candidate, if time allows, we will attempt to take a few questions. Brian Smith will read those questions or a summary of similar questions and identify who had submitted them and ask of the candidate. If the questions to the board, we may take those after the interview, so we'll save those would not want to take up the candidate's time for those kind of questions. And any questions that you submit, please, you know, if you have them, try to submit them during the first interview, we will only ask the same questions of the second interviewee that we asked of the first. So any questions that we're able to get in within the time from the public for the first candidate, we will repeat the same questions to the same to the second candidates with the same opportunity to answer. I think that is summarizes generally the the question in the public feedback portion during the interviews. After the interviews, we may choose to take some additional questions to the board if there are some on this evening. We may do some deliberation tonight, and then the plan will be to have it on the agenda for Monday night to continue our deliberation and potentially make a potential appointment. Did I miss anything around that, Bill or Brian? That was the summary of the Okay. Bill, I realized we didn't discuss how we were going to do the questions. Did you want to have us read them alternating or? Did you have a thought about that?
I thought that we would alternate.
Okay. If you want, I can start and you can do the if you want to do the evens, I'll do the odds or does that work for you?
Sure, why don't you take the you can take the first now we'll go alternate after that.
Okay, perfect. And the public's knowledge the the order tonight. Sergeant Robert Holst will be first up at 6:15 and Sergeant David Rice will be up second at 7:30. We do plan to take a short recess in between break five to 10 minutes between interviews.
Well, each candidate show on our screen.
Yes, that's correct.
Yep, so at at 6:15 and at 7:30, we'll move over the appropriate candidate that time to the analyst side and they will be on camera and we'll we'll take down the screen share, so it's just it's just the cameras. There've been a couple versions of this question so far, and since it's early, I'll just just for for the group's benefit for everyone out there. The any potential employment candidate with the town, you know, goes through the same or similar pre-employment testing and screening appropriate to their position, so. But a few questions about that and so consistent with the the normal pre-employment testing that would be applicable to a police officer would be appropriate for this position as well. And just to clarify, for those who have been on these formats and other meetings, we are not there is the raise your hand function, but we are not going to take allow the public to speak. So if you do have a question, please put it in the question box and we will try to get to it if possible. I don't know that we have any other housekeeping items. Brian, am I missing anything or Bill?
No, sir. I think we're good to go.
Okay. We'll just stay bear with all of us and the candidates. It is definitely different doing it in this format, so yeah. Appreciate everyone joining tonight and the candidates for for being part of this process. It is is definitely different than we're we're all used to.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
As we ask the questions that we have tonight, do they show up on the screen on the screen as well? Do the questions show up?
No. If you would like questions up, I could do that for you.
No, no, I was just just wondering.
Okay, but to that, the questions are the same for both candidates.
Right.
And for the audience sake, any letters or, you know, emails input that that we received from the public has been also sent to the board. So we do, we did receive copies of most, if not all of that input and public opinion around the potential candidates. So we do have that and had an opportunity to review that prior to this meeting. Just a couple more minutes and we'll get started. Okay, Brian, around 6:15, if you want to move from over and situated to get started.
Sergeant, you should have just been invited to the panel aside.
Good evening, sir. Sorry, I'm some dogs running around, but we are we are good now. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. It is 6:15, so. Once you're ready, do we have audio? I just want to make sure you're we can hear you okay?
Chairman Smith, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, sir. So you're the first candidate, Sergeant Robert Holst, welcome. And so the format is you've got a copy of the questions a couple hours ahead, so you know what we're going to ask generally. We're going to alternate Bill and I between the questions, give an opportunity to respond to them. And then if we have follow up to that, then at the end, we have opportunity, if you have any questions for us, we can talk about next steps and then if time allows within the window and there's some community questions, we will. Brian acting as the voice of those questions will summarize and ask those questions of you if time allows. And then once we've wrapped up, we'll take a short break and move on to second candidate. So.
Very good, sir.
So welcome. Thank you. So the first question, can you describe your philosophy on policing?
Sure, Chairman Smith. First of all, thank you all for having me. Thank you for this opportunity. My philosophy on policing starts with community and ends with community policing. I am absolutely committed to a community policing look on on policing. I believe that in order for us as law enforcement officers to be successful, we need the support of our community. We need our community to trust us. We need our community to help us. We can't accomplish anything without them. And in order to gain that trust, we must be part of the community. We must be involved in the community. We must be involved in community events. And not just the chief, but the department. We need to be at the school, building relationships with the kids and through building those relationships with the kids, we're building relationships with the teachers. And we're building relationships with those children's mothers and fathers and grandparents. I believe it's important to be involved in the senior center, the community center, stopping in the library. These are all things that I have done since I've been in Irving and will continue to do, will continue to encourage my officers or or the officers, the department to do that. So it starts with community policing and it ends with community policing and in between, you know, I have a philosophy that that the officers know is I do everything. Do all things for the right reason all the time. That's that's difficult to do things all the time, right? But I believe that if we strive to do the right thing for the right reason all the time, we hit that mark more than we miss that mark. When we don't do things right, we need to be willing to admit and accept criticism and to move on and to grow from them. So in between community policing comes my philosophy of that. My philosophy is also a team. I'm not the chief and it's not my department. It is our department. It's the community's department. I want community involvement. I want officer participation. I don't believe that decisions should be made strictly just by the chief, and I understand that times that the chief has to make decisions. And, you know, but I want us to be a team atmosphere. I want people to feel that their input and that their voice is heard, and I want the community feel that their input and their voice is heard. And I would say that that's that's my philosophy on policing.
Thank you, Sergeant Holst, and I'd like to welcome you here tonight as well. See you sweating a little bit. We're all nervous. You're not in this by yourself, so you need to take a breath. Just kind of wave your hand and we'll we'll give you a second. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
First course, second question, as this is a two-part question. If you are, if you need time to answer it, or you need to pause or you kind of get lost in in the question as to where you're at. Just give me a shout and and we'll repeat it. Question number two, as it relates towards developing the department, how how will you work towards fostering relationships and addressing issues of diversity, equity and inclusion?
Well, that's a that's a big topic, Mr. Ben Berry, Selectmen Ben Berry. That's that's a huge topic right now in law enforcement. And first of all, I I will have an open door policy. And my open door policy, meaning that I would encourage the community and I would encourage my officers that they are always welcomed to come into my office and to speak with me about anything that's going on. And not only is that an open door policy, but my office will be a safe place for anybody and everybody. I will encourage the department to to if they're not feeling that that their voice is being heard or that they feel that their opinions are not being heard, that they will be encouraged to come to me and talk to me. And then the same goes for the community. I believe that we can foster a good relationships by addressing diversity through training. You know, through policy writing, you know, I've only been in the acting chief position since since August and and I'm already looking at and working with area chiefs on a bias-free professional policing policy. You know, I I believe that that we can, we can look at the at the policies that we have in place and 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 tweak those and and bring in diversity and equality and inclusion issues into those policies. Like I said, I've already started working on one. You know, my officers and myself included will always seek to to find training. Recently, we all as a department attended fair and impartial policing training. It was an eight an eight-hour course. You know, and and I will continue to seek different opportunities to send myself and and the entire department to to those trainings. I think knowledge is key and having an understanding is important. We all come from different backgrounds. We all have different beliefs, but when we put on that uniform and when we're around each other, it needs it needs to be about what is right. And what does the law say? And 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 I can't bring my my personal beliefs into it. I can't bring my personal biases. I think we all need to realize and recognize we have biases. Everybody has biases, but we can't allow those biases to to dictate how how we do our job. And again, I I know that there's probably a lot of people listening online right now, and this is an opportunity for the community to hear me say, if you guys feel that our department is not, you know, if you feel that you are not being heard, or you feel that that we have a diversity issue, or you feel that you're you're being judged, please, please come to me. My office will be a safe place for you to 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 talk.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Miss Bender.
Just a quick follow up to that, and we touched on a lot of areas of fostering relationships, you know, in the department, in the community and the the different issues that that do exist. And, you know, we all said that they're out there and we we have to work to not continue them. In terms of other departments, how how do you, how would you foster relationships within the town and, you know, your your peers and other department heads in that role?
Well, like I said, Chairman Smith, you know, I've already been been speaking with a couple chiefs. I have a few chiefs in the area that I'm very good friends with outside of of law enforcement. Chief Sullivan over in Orange, Chief Lundgren in in Athol. And I think that as 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 a as a chief, you know, we can communicate with with other chiefs and find out what's working in their community, what's working within their department. Listen, I I can't write a whole policy myself. You know, I need input from from other communities. You know, I I think it's important to get input from from large communities, you know. I recently took to took the East Hampton Police Department policy on bias-free professional policing, and and I read that and and how can that be implemented? Now, I've never spoken with that chief over there. But I would not hesitate to reach out to these other chiefs in these bigger departments that probably deal with a a larger variety of diversity than I do here in Irving, but I would continue to 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 reach out and to solicit advice from 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 all chiefs, lieutenants, captains, all ranks, and and I believe that I have done that already and will continue to do that, sir.
Thank you. Question three, discuss your understanding of the Irving Police Department's mission and how that aligns with the values and the priorities of the town of Irving.
It's interesting that this is a question. We recently hired two new officers. And I spent the first week, week and a half with those officers. And one of the first things I did is I went and I polled our our mission statement. And I shared it with both of those officers. I and I believe officer, I got permission to say their names before this meeting during this session. So I believe that I shared it with Officer Pecos also, and I'm not sure if I shared it with Officer Flower. I believe she's listening, but and I asked them, you know. First and foremost, I believe our mission statement is is a it's a living document. It it's something that we need to to address and review and and constantly go back to. Issues change, issues change in the community, and so our mission statement should change. And so I've already challenged at least three of the four, if not all four of them with taking a look at the mission statement, tell me what you think. Where are some areas that we could we can make things different? But you know, our our mission statement focuses on things like creating and preserving safety. It it talks about partnering with the community and it talks about constitutional rights. You know, investigating criminal activity, maintaining professionalism, all important, all very important, but our mission statement doesn't talk about diversity. It doesn't talk about civil issues. It doesn't talk about inclusion. And so that that's an area that I've already begun to 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 look at and and how to incorporate that. But but what it does say does align with the values that I believe in the priorities of this town. If we want to maintain a high level of professionalism on every encounter we have, whether it's just stopping in and and having coffee with somebody, or it's pulling somebody over, or it's arresting somebody. We need to treat everybody with with integrity, with dignity, with respect. And and that's already being enforced, you know, with the with the two new officers that 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 we've recently hired. Like I said, I spent a week and a half with them, talking to them about my philosophy on on community policing and what it means to police in in the town of Irving and and the mission statement and and how we need to implement that and how we conduct on on a day day day-to-day basis. So so again, I I hope that that answers the question. Again, it's it's a living document, you know, I would like to to change it. I'd like to shorten it. I'd like to try to 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 make it simpler. I think it should be something that we remember, not something that we have to pull out and read. I think it should be something that we remember and that that has an impression on us.
Thank you.
Sergeant Holst, I I commend you for seeing that your officers and have read the the mission statement because I assume would even if the officers understand the mission and they live it and they work it, not just when they're on duty, but when they're off duty as well. Makes them a better person in the community and makes them a better officer. And question number four, describe your philosophy towards training within a department.
Yeah, training is huge. You know, I think every day is an opportunity for us to to look at the at the day at at our eight hours or 10 hours or 16 hours, however many hours we're putting in that day is is an opportunity to train. Every report that I read is an opportunity for me to 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 train, to to give advice, to point in a different direction, different wording, different phrases. And so I look at every opportunity. Recently, I just had one of my officers send me a text message today. You know, he was out on his own and how did my my complaint look? And I had an opportunity to 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 share some 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 training opportunities, some 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 guidance to him. It was a great report. I don't want you to guys think it was a mess. It was a great report and he did a wonderful job. But what I say is that is that every report that's written, every traffic stop that is made is an opportunity for not only me, but the but if if I'm the chief, then the next sergeant or even the patrolman, the patrolman should be saying, hey, I noticed this in your report. I noticed that in your report. You know, we had a senior officer in this department that that tried that all the time. Hey, I just want to give you some friendly advice. So every day is an opportunity to train. But I also think that training goes beyond just every day. You know, our department for the size that we are, we're very, very fortunate. And I believe that when we have well-trained officers, it it betters them. It betters them as as people. It betters them as officers. You know, we we seek opportunities to to send officers to training, you know, I mean, we're a department of six and we had an ICAC investigator. You know, you don't have, there's not a department around us that has an ICAC investigator, but yet we had one. It recently retired. We have, we've, we had at one point, we had two DRE instructors, officers that were trained in DRE. We had a canine at one point. We have a dare officer. We had an officer, Officer Flower, recently graduated from the Full-Time Police Academy back in in June, July. And as soon as I became the chief, I wanted to send her to sexual assault school. I didn't want to send her to sexual assault school just because I wanted to. I wanted to because I knew that that training would benefit her. She was interested in that training and that training would help us to be better officers and better serve our community. You know, you you think about a sexual assault crime. You know, I I'm a sexual assault investigator. But if you have an opportunity, if a child has an opportunity or a woman has an opportunity, because historically statistically, women and children are victimized by that more than males. And so if we have a woman that's been victimized by by a sexual assault and and that woman has an opportunity to speak with a female officer, that's great. That's great for everybody involved. And so I will continue to seek out training opportunities, training opportunities to make our officers better, training opportunities that officers are interested in just to make us a better team and and better serve our community. So training is huge to me, Selectmen Ben Berry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Question five, please describe your experience with managing a budget, managing personnel matters and participating in collective bargaining with the union.
My experience in in managing, I want to, I want, I guess I'll go to the middle one. I I I kind of lump managing in my last interview. So so bear with me, Chairman Smith, you already heard it and and Town Administrator Smith, you already heard it, but managing and supervising are different. Managing is the process supervision is is overseeing of the people. I have a tremendous amount of supervision experience that goes all the way back from when I was in high school. My managing skills and my managing experience My managing skills and my managing experience, I was thrown into a situation back in August where I took on an acting role chief position and what was flooded with a a large amount of issues, with retirements, with discipline issues. And 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 the knowledge that I have gained since August has been just tremendous in in my confidence, in my ability to manage. But more importantly, I have people in my circle that I can rely on, that I can count on, that other chiefs that I can call and ask for advice, my town administrator that that that, you know, I can call and ask for advice. Managing person, I recently attended a a class on injured on duty and 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 having an understanding of how that process works. That's forever, always changing, and and I will have to continue to seek ways to to grow in 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 my managing skills. But I do believe that I have been given a tremendous amount of of experience in a very, very short period of time. When I say short period of time, I mean, we're almost seven, eight months into this now. In budgets, you know, I I have my own budget, you know. I I'm I'm a I'm a husband and a father of three and I have my own budgets, a single income. You know, I live paycheck to paycheck. I have to know how to budget my own finances. You know, somebody once told me that it's easy to budget a large budget, it's hard to budget a small budget. And if you can, you can budget a small budget, you know, you you should be able to handle a large budget. And I don't want to say that, well, it's a large budget, I can be frugal, I can be, you know, just spend wherever I want. That's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is is that I pay attention to what's going on. I pay attention to the budget. I'm probably looking at our budget, honestly, once a week. You know, Town Administrator Smith, you know, I just recently sent you an email about a budget issue with a cruiser. You know, I'm constantly aware of what's going on with the budget. I've brought budget issues to the select board in in the time that I've been in the acting chief position. You know, I saw that we were going to have an issue with with our budget as far as the overtime went because of the the staffing issues that we have. I'm looking at my budget where it stands today and where it stood last year. And I understand that last year is completely different than this year. But I'm I'm constantly aware and paying attention. And I want to be fiscally responsive responsible. You know, I don't want to be coming to the to the selectmen every year saying, oh, I need more money, need more money. I I I spent more money than I had, you know. So it it it's it's something that I know I need to be aware of. I will continue to monitor it. I will continue to be aware of 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 it and and I will continue to bring forth concerns that I have without delay. And and collective bargaining, you know, I I I don't have a lot of lot of experience as a manager or as a chief in dealing with collective bargaining. But like I said earlier, Chief Sullivan over in Orange and Chief Craig Lundgren over in Athol PD, great resources for me to call whenever. I could call up Chief Sullivan right now with a question and he and he would pick up and he or he would get back to me as quick as I can. I understand that that this is going to be a huge learning curve for me and I'm going to need to rely on people. I have been in unions, I have been around unions as a union member. I've been part of bargaining negotiations and and so forth. But I've never been in the position to oversee it. I understand that the way unions do work, there's guidelines that set up, there's guidelines that 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 we have to follow and is and and we will follow those guidelines, whatever those guidelines turn out to be. And again, if I ever have a question, I can I can turn to to to, you know, ultimately, who's who would be my boss would be the town administrator for advice, you know, the town council for advice and and the surrounding chiefs that that oversee unions. That's that's all I, that's all I have. I'm sorry, I guess he wanted to add in, apologies.
Sergeant, this is a two-part question. Please, please discuss your views on the use of body camera equipment in the operation of the police department and furthering and furthering the department's mission by that use.
Absolutely, 100%. Without a without a question, I am 100% in on body cameras. I've heard all kinds of arguments about the negativity, the negative side of things. It doesn't matter to me. I have seen firsthand how our body cameras in our department have I don't want to say saved officers because they weren't in a situation where they need save saving, but put to rest very quickly any dispute. And I can guarantee you that if I was to go to my department right now and tell them I'm getting rid of the body cameras, I would probably get kickback from them. We are all sold in on it. I will continue to 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 look to advance that. You know, I I I look at recently, we recently updated our entire hard drive system and looking at the computer, the 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 body cameras that we have now, they're probably getting to the point where they're going to become outdated, should be updated. And 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 I will continue to do that. Camera goes down, I'm quick to get it fixed, replaced. They're that important to me. I think that not only are they good when it comes to, you know, addressing issues, but they're also good for training opportunities. When we can look back at our at our body cameras and and say, I should have handled this situation differently or I should have done this a little different, or you could have done this a little different. It's an excellent opportunity to to train. You know, I I I wouldn't go to work without one at this point. I really want it and I wouldn't want my officers going out on the streets without one. I will continue to to encourage and promote, promote even to the surrounding communities. I mean, Franklin County was was one of Franklin County was the first, if I'm not mistaken. We were the first in Franklin County to to get the cameras. I want to say, Selectman Bambarry, we were probably one of the first in the state of Massachusetts, you know, due to Chief Blair and his work on the cameras. I will not let that go. I will not let that work go and I will only look to advance it and to make it better.
Thank you, sir. And you 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 are correct in that the Irving Police Department was the first department to obtain and purchase body cameras in Franklin County. And it shows, goes to show how progressive the department is and has been and will be. Thank you, sir.
I agree, thank you.
And someday I'll check and know where we were on the list in the state, but it was also pretty high, pretty close to the top because I know we were, we were leading from the other part of the state.
It amazes me that departments still don't have them. It really, you know, and with the new, the the new reform bill moving forward, every department is going to be mandated to have them. I want to say by 2022, I don't have the the exact date in front of me. You know, and a lot of departments have called us and asked us about our 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 policies and procedures and how we handle them. I recently had a conversation with Chief Shoemaker over in Warwick, who who have them and 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 I'm sure all their departments will will reach out to us. It's only a matter of time before, but he has them. I'm surprised people don't have them, you know, I really am. Tremendous tool.
Agreed. Moving on to question seven, please describe how you would handle complaints from the community.
Complaints from the community, at first, you know, all the community members that might be listening. And if you're not listening, but you know, somebody that, if you're listening, please share this. Again, it goes back to the open door policy. I will have an open door policy. I absolutely 100% want to encourage people to bring their concerns to the attention of the Irving Police Department. I also want them to know, again, it will be a safe place. And if they don't feel comfortable bringing it to my attention or bringing it to one of our officers' attention, please bring it to the town administrator's attention, please bring it to the select board's attention. So I am, this is a public announcement to all those that are listening to this interview. Pass the word on. Bring your concerns to our attention. We cannot address them unless we know about them. Having said that, we have forms, we have policies that that guide us on on how we handle us citizen complaints. My officers have access to the citizen complaint form. If all officers don't know about it, they they, you know, I will, I will accept responsibility for that. But again, I believe all of our officers are aware of the citizen complaint form. If any member of the of the community or traveling through says I am unhappy with the performance of an officer, they are to be given one of these forms. And our officers know that. And if they don't know that, I'll reiterate that. These forms are easily accessible. You can access, you you can get them. And if they're not on our website, I'll make sure that they're put on our website to to bring, to put in writing their concerns. But I think what's also important is to understand and to remember that I, as the chief, cannot just jump to conclusion. I can't just jump to, listen to a citizen complaint and just automatically assume that that officer is responsible for what that, what what is being said about him. And that's why I like to have it in writing. What exactly is the complaint from the community member? Then I can go to the officer and I can talk with the officer. I will bring it to the officer's attention. Hey, a a complaint has been filed against you. A formal complaint has been filed against you. Talk to me, tell me, help me understand what was your mindset? What were you thinking in this situation? I will review officers' reports, I will review the officer's body camera. That goes back to the body camera question that Selectman Benberry answered. I don't know how many complaints have been resolved by simply saying I will review the body camera. Oh, you have body cameras? Yes. Well, I maybe I didn't really say what I said that I said. And so I will review those body cameras. And 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 I will reach out to, you know, if I run my, if I find myself in a situation that I'm not familiar with, I'll reach out to area departments with 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 protection of the officer, you know, not using names and ask, how do I handle this situation? How would you handle this situation? You know, I'll have to seek out guidance and counsel from from the from the town administrator and from town council, you know, with with the department unionizing, you know. But I do want you to know to the community that your complaints will be heard. I will respond to them in a timely manner and 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 I will seek to have an understanding, a mutual understanding, you know. It's an opportunity for me, a lot of complaints, it's 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 funny, a lot of complaints will come in. And and I just simply explain the law to people and they're like, why, I guess I didn't understand that, I didn't know that. You know, people want to know that what the police officers are doing, they have the legitimate right to do what they're doing. You know, take a a vehicle search, for example. If we have probable cause to believe that a crime has occurred, we have a right to do a search of that vehicle. Or if we're towing that vehicle, we have a right to do a a an inventory tow. And and a lot of people just don't understand that. And when you explain it to them, they understand. So I will use it as an opportunity to educate the community, you know, with complaints. But again, I I want to encourage complaints to be brought forward. We don't, unless we know, we can't address them.
I'd like to add on to to that that the selectmen and I am available and have received complaints throughout my tenure as as a select board member. And I follow the same policies and procedures that that the Irving Police Department follows in asking questions and and looking for complaints being formally issued and and written out because I know that it it not a whole lot's going to happen unless people clearly understand the policy and procedure for doing that. And 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 although I'm there to listen, ultimately, if it has something to do with the police department, I and or the board will be going back to the police department and asking questions as well. And and the first thing is, is when I have people come to my home who decide they they're they're not happy with issues or concerns, the first thing I ask them is, after I listen, I say, have you filed a complaint with the police department? Because that's important.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to say that that we are always, we have an open door policy as well at my home, as select board. And my phone has always been unlisted. I mean, listed, but unlisted, it has always been listed. And I'm available for calls or to address any issues or concerns that the community might have. Thank you, Sergeant.
I'd just like to add to that, Selectman Benberry, if I can just take a few minutes. I'm trying to keep an eye on the time and I know that we're running, running low on time. But, you know, I I, our department has an excellent reputation, I truly believe, within its community. You know, we don't have complaint problems, very rarely. I'm not saying that we don't. And 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 when those complaints have been brought to my attention without putting out too much information out right now, because I know it's a public hearing, but I have, I have addressed complaints and I will continue to address complaints. And and I will not rest until that complaint is 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 resolved. But our department does not receive a lot of complaints. And 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 sometimes the complaints that come in, it's just, it's just educating people on 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 the process. And and once they're educated, they they can go away still angry, but they at least go away at least understanding that the officer followed the policy and procedure put in place. And that's a 99% of the time, that's what I find.
I'll just reiterate what you and and what Bill said. We, you know, open door policy, same with me, you know, any complaints come in, whether they are police matter related or or anything around the town business, you know, we want to hear it, we want to understand it. And maybe it's educating why it's that way. Or we can do things to look at that and improve the services we provide and and the workforce we have because we're here to to serve the community. Both said, both of you.
Sergeant Hoss, last question. Is there any other information that you believe is important to your application that you would like to share with the committee tonight?
There is. I'm a member of this community. You know, I I moved my family here, I sold my house in Orange. I moved my family, I took my my three children out of their school system. Well, my daughter, my oldest, she was at the tech school at the time, so it wasn't a big shock change. But two of my children were pulled away from their friends and out of their school system that they were familiar with and put into the Irving School System. I care about this community. I care what happens with this community. I'm involved with this community. My family is a part of the fabric of this community. I have an invested interest in this community, in the long term of this community. I'm not just coming here to collect a paycheck and moving on. You know, I was hired here in 2011. And I'm still here in 2021 and I have no desire to go anywhere else. I want this department to be the best department possible and to provide the best service possible for its community because I'm part of it, I'm part of this community. I know the department better than anybody. I have a personal relationship with Adam Pecos, his wife Kristen, his son Wes. You know, I knew Jim Loyn prior to, you know, he's retired, and Kelly. I remember one day giving Kelly a hug in the parking lot, you know, when, when, when her husband was involved in a situation. I know their children. Amanda, I know Amanda. I know Amanda's issues. Recently, her, 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 her family issues of losing two very close grandparents. I know my staff and my staff knows me. My staff knows that I care about them. They know that it's not just about police work. It's about their personal life as well. I know our system better than anybody. I know our watch guard system. I know our billing. I know our payroll. I know our computer system as far as electronic submission of our complaint systems. I do sexualist, I do the sex offender registry. I do the, the firearms issue. I am running the Irving Police Department and I have been running the Irving Police Department since August. And I have done it with no complaints from anybody and very limited staff. And we are still as a team providing the highest level of policing to its community. And more importantly, I know this community. I know every issue that we're facing from the French King Bridge to Church Street to departments, other department members. I have a working relationship with the highway, with the water department, with, with the librarian who's been new to this department. I've stopped in and speak, spoken with her, I want to say at least two or three times with the senior center, the community center, the school. I am invested and committed to this community. And I know this community better than anybody and I know our department better than anybody. And I'd just like to say for all those that are listening tonight, I've never received more support in the past 24 to 48 hours that I have received, phone calls, text messages, emails from this community, and I cannot thank you guys enough. Every single one of you, and I'm sure that there's even people that have done stuff that I don't know. I cannot thank this community enough for their support that they have shown me and my family. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you. So at this point, we have about 15 more minutes if there is public questions. Just to, to reiterate where we were, you know, what I said in the beginning, for those who have joined since. If you have questions, you can put them in the question box and town administrator will review and summarize if there's similar questions. Note who they came from and for the candidate. If there are questions, we will ask the same questions of the second candidate at the end of that interview. But we won't take questions after this interview closes for the candidates. After the final interview, we may take questions to the board if there are any at the end of the evening before we wrap up. And Sergeant Holt, just for your information, we may do some deliberation this evening. But our plan is to continue that deliberation and make a, potentially make an appointment and a decision on Monday evening.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Brian, is there any questions at this point?
No questions have been submitted, just several statements of support.
Well, I'll give it another minute. It has an opportunity if they want to type something in before we wrap up. I know now it's the awkward silence. Based on what I'm looking through here too, you know, same as, as Brian had said, it looks like there's lots of notes of support, but I don't see any direct questions. So Bill, unless you have anything else, I think I would say we are complete with your interview, Sergeant Holt. Okay. Thank you, sir. And you're welcome to stay on the public meeting after. I, I do think the only way we can move you off of this side of the panelist side is to, to unfortunately boot you out, but you are welcome to rejoin.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, thank you to, if anybody on the, on the search committee is listening, thank you for your support to getting to this round and thank you, gentlemen, for this evening and the opportunity. And again, thank you to the community. Greatly appreciated.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
You as all, you all as well.
Okay. At this point, Bill, unless there's anything that you want to cover, I would say that we should take a recess and then resume around just, just before 7:30 for the second interview.
Works for me.
Okay. I'll move that we take recess until we'll call 7:28 PM. Just time to get in here and get, get started back up. Do we need to vote on that, Brian, or is that fine?
Yes, I need to, I need you to make a motion to go into recess. If you can do that, please.
Yeah, I'll move that we recess until 7:28 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
And if you don't mind for the public, if folks are going to choose to log off, the link that you use to register will still work. I'll keep this room open. So, so feel free to log off and join back in if you'd like to.
Yep. And this will stay open, so you can, you can stay here and wait until we resume as well, whichever you prefer. Thank you all. We'll see you shortly.
Okay.